Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. We've got a certification of a quorum. We've got one absentee, Councilman Koblenz. And at this time, we'll stand for pledge allegiance and invitation. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Councilman Wallace will be lead us.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day and all the blessings you give us. Thank you for being with us day in and day out. Help us today to make decisions for the community that are good for all of us here and keep us safe as we go away from here tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
We'll move into item number four, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. City council is limited to making statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry or reciting existing policy, but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. I believe at this time, we only have one. We've got Eric Burrow. Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bushmonte and city council. My name's Eric Burrow. My wife and I, Kathy, have the property at 107 West Montserrat here in El Campo. And there's a large tree that's on the city property that has done substantial damage to our building. And I'm requesting that y'all remove the tree. If y'all have any other questions about it, feel free to get in touch with me. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Burrow, I'll reach out to you tomorrow and we can further discuss.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. All right, this time, we're going to, item number five, consent agenda. Approval of city council regular meeting, November the 12th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Minutes.
Mayor, I move we adopt the consent agenda.
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number six, items for individual consideration. Number one, ordinance 2024-22, amending the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget, funding municipal purposes and authorizing expenditures.
And this is a cleanup ordinance from last fiscal year in which we are carrying over that we're budgeting for the cost for barrel. We didn't receive those invoices till just recently, the final closeout invoices. And that's why you're seeing this in front of you so late. But it's a cleanup amendment. There's a detailed narrative inside that item. Definitely don't have to show it on the screen, but it was there for your reading plus an outline detailed description of each item. This was reviewed by the finance committee on Thursday, November 21st. We have it in there for the final adoption. This is your final amendment for last year.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 2024-22. I attended the finance committee meeting and we didn't have any questions, weren't fully explained.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I do. It says that we've requested funding or reimbursement of 1.5 million, but our actual expenditures were basically 1.3. What's the difference, the 200,000?
He's asking the difference in the barrel. The 1.5 was only for debris removal. And so, we did them in phases. That was just for one sub-phase. I don't remember what section that was that came out. But they're paid out, and they're paid out by that section two. In fact, FEMA was here this morning.
Well, I get, that's what I'm asking is, it says we paid out less than what we're asking from FEMA. Is there a reason we asked for more from FEMA? Is it to cover the grant and all of those administrative, the extra?
Yes, the grant administration's included in there.
Okay.
The GMC. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve ordinance 2024-22? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number two, resolution R.2024-65, approving a contract with Prestige Building Group for exterior and interior painting services at the El Campo Civic Center for an amount not to exceed $90,000.
And we also discussed this at our finance committee meeting because if some of you will recall, around a year and a half ago, two and a half years ago, we met with you and we reviewed all the projects that we had for the civic center that we were earmarking fund balance for. And this is one of those projects that we were earmarking the fund balance for. It was the painting of the interior and exterior. We went out for bid and the bid requirements were very stringent. We had indemnification and we had insurance requirements and that, that's to protect the city. We received, we received some bids. The bid that we are recommending is Prestige Building Group. I think we received three. We did, we received three bids. They're on page 15 of your packet.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 2024-65 as presented.
Second.
We got a motion and a second on the floor to approve resolution R.2024-65 as presented. Any discussion?
Courtney, how long is the painting supposed to take?
There's a schedule included in the packet. The closeout.
Said mid-January, I think.
Yep, mid-January because.
Starting.
Starting next week, they're going to pressure wash before the Christmas mall. And then they're going to come back in after and start. While the, while the Christmas mall is going on, if they can, they'll be making some fixes to the holes that they cite. But it should be some point repairs. They shouldn't be in the way. They know about our rental schedule. And if we have to move them, we will.
So there's $150,000 left in the, in the, in a balance earmarked for the civic center after this expenditure?
Yes.
Do you have, do you know, currently, do we have a list of items that, how to spend that money?
Yeah, we need to replace the table and chairs. We need to replace the flooring. There's a, the kitchen needs a lot of attention. Yeah, there's a long list, unfortunately.
Courtney, I was wondering, the $16,000 interior, why was their bid so much lower than everybody else's on the interior?
Are you talking about, and I have no idea why their bid was so low on that alternative bid. I don't know if it's because they've mobilized and they're onsite or not. I have no idea. But paint is included in this bid.
Okay.
Well, that's my concern. You go from 48,000 to 16,000 to 54,000, but the total is 90,000. And the next closest is 108, 139. Is this $90,000 a fixed price not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
And that's in your contract, so.
That's how the contract will be written. That's how the resolution for your approval is written.
That's what alarmed me was why they were almost half of what everybody was on the interior.
Just on the interior. Like, they were higher on the exterior, so their total cost came in.
So that, this will not allow for any change orders because I just can't possibly see, that's too big of a variance to not. I mean, I could see the first one, there's enough that's 15 and say 20, no, 15 and 10. You're talking about, what, 32 and 38,000?
We did reference checks on them. We called. There are references, you can see the project references inside the packet. They've done work at Sam Houston State University. They've also done some work in Bryan, Texas, at St. Joseph Medical Center. You can see the insurance information's in there.
It's got to come down to the amount of paint they buy. It's the only thing I can come up with.
A fixed contract.
Right, but they may buy enough paint per year.
They'll have to eat it.
Yeah, I don't know. It's got to be, it's the only thing I can come up with.
Variance in the product.
Yeah, they must buy a lot of paint.
Where does it say fixed price? It says total project cost.
The resolution on page 14 says not to exceed 90,000. And that authorizes me to enter the contract with them.
The resolution I'm looking at has, okay, it says not to exceed, but in the, up above, it says total project cost of 90,000. Okay, not to exceed. Okay.
Courtney, when you were talking about that, or Blake was talking about it with the, the other funds, there's, there's probably a prioritized list, and maybe that's not for this, but a prioritized list somewhere of other items for the civic center that we have to do. I wonder if there's a chance to knock off some of those?
There's the, there's the opportunity. We're just phasing them in.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Y'all probably come back with that.
I guess we strictly specify all the materials they'll use.
Yeah, they're included.
Quality of the paint and all that, how you do that.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying they wouldn't, I'm just saying, I don't know how they specify paint.
We'll work with them on that, Mr. Hancock.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor for resolution R.2024-65. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Item number three, we've got Garrett Bubella approaching the poll for resolution R.2024-66, authorizing city staff to solicit requests for qualifications for engineering services in connection with the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program administered by the Texas Division of Emergency Management, Texas Water Development Board, or other funded sources for DR.4798 Hurricane Burrow and DR.4781 April/May severe storms and flooding for generator projects. Eric?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we've had two recent storms, disasters that we qualify for our hazard mitigation grant application for. That would be Hurricane Burrow and then the April/May severe storms and flooding. So these next two items are just going to start getting that process and applying to these grants. This first item is to go out for RFQs for engineering services. The projects we're looking at, as identified by our hazard mitigation plan, is to continue trying to build our resiliency and stuff with our wastewater plant. So the first one is going to be with lift stations. You know, we talked about, we got the pumps recently. And so, with our goal of eventually getting permanent generators there, so this will be that step, because it could be one, two, three years before we actually get this money if awarded it. So our goal is to get permanent generators at all the lift stations. And then the other grant, looking at a generator for the civic center in case we have to use it as a shelter or a first responder staging area or anything like that in the future. And talking to Grant Works, our first step is to let them know they can go out for RFQ for engineering.
Garrett, does the, do the grants have money to cover this engineering service?
Yes, yes. The grant will cover 75%. We cover the other 25%.
Didn't we already do this?
We did for portable generators. When we did the grant for the COVID one, the grant we're recently awarded for the water towers. And we'd originally started with the lift stations included in there, but had to weed those out due to the size of the grant. So the, the engineering for the whole lift stations wasn't complete. So we still needed complete engineering on them.
Why wouldn't we use that same engineering firm?
So, we could if they applied for another, put in the RFQ. But in order to get reimbursement from FEMA, we have to go out for the RFQ again.
And it was Strand we were working with.
Oh, that's a good answer.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Which one are we on? I make a motion, we approve resolution R.2024-66 as presented.
Got a motion?
A second.
A second? Any discussion?
I'd like to ask a question. Why do we want to put a generator in the civic center? We have stated repeatedly in this room that that building is not suitable for emergency use and that we don't ever intend to have emergency evacuees or anybody else in there.
Well, I'd like to say something on that. It'll probably never be used for, you know, because this is a pass-through town. But like Garrett said, for emergency use, for, you know, like for fire department EMS, they need more room, don't have enough room.
We've got that huge facility that we have spent $10 million on.
Right, but if, if we do have that, but I understand where Garrett was coming from, and you can follow up Garrett. I know a lot of times, we may have some rescue people here helping citizens and whatever. We may need somewhere to feed them or whatever to get fed. So I know we've got the fire department training facility also, but.
It's got a generator too, I presume?
No, it does not.
No?
Or yeah, it does, it does. Yes, it does.
So, there's a lot of possibilities we could use the civic center for in the future that we just, it's automatically been rejected because we didn't have the backup power out there. You know, yes, hurricanes were a pass-through county, but with our freezes or anything like that, if we needed a warming center or cooling center, to where they still go home at night, but they're there just for the daytime.
Okay.
And in the coming months, we are going to go out for RFQs for like the ancillary services, say if we need portable showers for somebody to bring them in. If we do get to that point, it's just step by step in getting there. And this was judged as, we can't do any of that without the backup power at the civic center.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, resolution R.2024-67. Garrett?
Okay, so this is a second part to that. As you know, a few meetings ago, we had the preposition grants, well, the preposition contracts for grant writing. And so this is just activating that contract with Grant Works for applying to these two HMA grants. We chose to go to Grant Works with these because they do not get paid unless we get awarded the grant. So the application is completely free. And then once we get the grant, then they get up to 5% of the total grant cost is covered by the grant.
Just a reminder, we're working with Grant Works on our comp plan right now.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution R.2024-67 as presented.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve resolution R.2024-67 as presented. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Moving on to item number five, purchase of body worn in-car camera system for the police department.
And I will defer to our police chief.
Thank you very much, Mayor, city council. I'm kind of excited about this because one of the things when I first took over as chief is the issues that we had right away and that we continue to have is our system currently, it does operate, we do capture video. On the front side, the video cameras are well-established technology. They will take a picture, what we wanted to take a picture of. Where we run into troubles is retrieving that data. And today, in the, in our environment, especially as it concerns body worn cameras, there's been some legislation that requires us to do a lot of redacting. There are specific laws on what can be released. It's become more complicated. And our current system has a very rudimentary redaction system. So when someone makes a request, let's say, as an example, we may have children in that video because everything that our officers are seeing is being captured. But we have to take them out of the video before we release it. And, and the laws are very specific on that of what we cannot release. And today, it takes us hours and hours of work because the system we have will freeze up and we have to start over. And we've had this problem since I've been there. The platform it's on is over 20 years old. The technology basically is 20. And so, we went out, we took the opportunity during the last year to research what we could find. And, and in your packet, I've written, we went through and we looked at seven different companies. You have a range of possibilities here. We actually are looking to the future. The future of this, number one, our current system is all downloaded onto a fixed server at the PD. So that means our units have to go to the PD, have to sit there, have to dock it, then it gets downloaded. That works most of the time, but there's a lot of times that it doesn't work. And, and it's, it's a limitation to that type of system. The issue also with that is that server sits in our server room. This last year, we had to purchase another one because we didn't have enough room. And we also had to upgrade some of the issues that had to do with security. And so, that's an ongoing cost with the, with the system we have today. The cameras themselves, last year, we had to purchase four of them and they're $500 a piece. They don't fix them, they're throwaway. That seems odd, $500, but you have to send them back and then they give you a different one. The company we're using right now was bought out by a much larger company and that company has a different platform. So, you know, been around long enough to know that usually spells, it's going to be phased out, the company that we're using, because they're, they're the smaller product and they bought them out. It hasn't happened, they haven't told us it's going to happen, but I'm looking to the future. One day, they're going to drop the bomb on us and go, whoop, that's it, we're not supporting you anymore. And so, with that in mind, this system that, that we're presenting to you is called utility. It's, in Texas alone, they have 53 vendors that they're, that are currently, 53 agencies that are using this system from very large to small agencies. So they're throughout the spectrum. They have 385 clients on their platforms throughout the United States with 80,000 devices. Now, this system is based on your phone, you all might have iPhones, but it's based on an Android phone system. And so, the beauty of that is, we don't have the bulky cameras anymore. These actually are integrated into the uniforms of the officers. So it's very unlikely that one would ever fall off or that they forget it in the car because they had it up here on the charger in the car and something happens. This one also has a lot of built-in features because it is based on that platform that are really proprietary to this utility, no one else can provide it. And for me, as a police chief, one of the big ones is, one that, and I mentioned it in the packet, last year, Harris County had a deputy that was shot on a traffic stop. Dispatch actually sent people to that deputy before anyone else called it in or he called it in because they had this type of system. If you fall down, become vertical, it sends a deal after so many seconds, it sends it to you. And if you don't reply to it, it dispatches. So they actually were, had people in route and they touted it, I've talked to the sheriff in Harris County, and they touted it, pretty much saved an officer's life because of the quickness of the response. The other issues with it, I say issues, are some of the good things about it, is that they also, if my officer jumps out of his car, we had an incident a little while back, one of our officers got into, he got shot at. Well, the only way we captured it was the in-car camera because he didn't have enough time. It was happening so fast that when he jumped out of the car and started running, the body camera was gone. Now, we were fortunate that they were within range of the car, but if they had gone out of that range of that car, we'd had nothing. This one, if they get into a foot pursuit, it'll automatically turn on. Because it's based, it has geopositioning, so it knows if you're running up and down because the way they mount it, and we've seen demonstrations on it, it's, I'm very excited about it because I think you're going to have safer officers and the citizens will be able to know that, hey, this is being recorded. It's an expectation today. And I think this particular company, the bid on it this year, it's a five-year deal. We also looked at that. Most of these systems are going to run about 200,000 plus for the whole system. And so, we looked at companies that would give us a five-year contract, pay it out in five years. So this is one of them. Utilities quote, which was actually the lowest quote, the entire cost is 2,000, I mean, I'm sorry, 216,540, paid out over five years. Year one on theirs, they're a little different. You pay more on the first year than the other years. So that first year is, is this year's budget, 67,960. I budgeted that, I can pay for it in this year's budget, and I think it's important enough to do it. And I would like you to be on board and approve it.
Do you think the, and I'm totally ignorant about electronic stuff, but do you think this system will handle rapidly changing upgrades?
I think it actually is really the leader in that because it is not based on a camera technology, it's based on a smartphone technology. The difference with this company, I did a lot of research on it, this company didn't start off as a body camera or police company. It's an actual company that's based on technologies, computers, cellphone type. So, so they're actually at the forefront. Most of the products, things I just told you about, they're the only company in this country that can do it because they patented it. So, so a lot of these things, they are the leader. And again, they, they go from every, from very large agencies to small, so I know they can handle our volume. I have no issue with that. One other thing that I will say about that is it has about one-fifth the amount of hardware than the other systems. And when I say that, it's currently, we have to have docking stations in the PD, you have one in the car, and you also have pretty large equipment in the car. Most, all that's gone now. Now, you have a charger, you have a phone, even the upgrades are done, they can be done on the air. Now, there, it's technology, you know, there's imperfections, but it, for me, it seems to be the most reliable and for the future, the one that will be upgraded most efficiently.
So it's like you can plug it into a computer and transcribe the conversation and that kind of?
You don't have to. It goes immediately through the air.
Uh huh.
And it's downloaded.
So it prints it out?
Yes. And I didn't mention, but it's in my packet, another big issue that we have currently is to find the data in our system now and download it is quite time-consuming. So if we have a case, which almost every case above Class C, we're having some kind of video on, most of them, well, we have to get that onto usually a DVD or some kind of flash drive. We have to get it down to that and I have to send somebody over to Wharton to deliver it to prosecutor. On this system, I can, it's web-based in that sense that I can give them a code for that case, send it electronically to the prosecutor. All they have to do is go in there and download it. The key is, we had them download some stuff from some other agencies that had unbelievable amounts of data, like one of them was almost a terabyte. And we were able, they were able to send that electronically and we got it like that. Whereas today, if I tried to send you that on a normal email, you, number one, they'll say, too big, I can't send it. So we tested that aspect of it too, and we were very pleased with that. So we get a big homicide case, we may have a terabyte of information. And so, we can take whatever's stored on that system, I can provide access directly to the prosecutor.
Sounds like you really researched it.
Yes, sir, we did.
Thank you.
I think it promotes officer safety, it's in the budget. Another thing you might want to look at also is it protects the officer in case there's somebody that uses them of something that they didn't do.
Very, very true. In most cases, I'll be honest with you, I'm very proud to say that in most cases, that's what it does.
Yes.
I've had a few of the other, you know, but most of the time, it backs up the officer. And, and so that, that helps. And then also, what I find is, is a citizen, you know, let's face it, when we encounter them, they're not happy, it's stressful. They may not be lying to me when they complain, but when I show them the video and then they go, oh, okay. And they realize that what they were telling me wasn't accurate. I'm not saying they're lying, but, but I have found that through the years, that's one of the biggest tools to say, hey, they come back and go, okay, I see what you're saying, chief. And, and so I've seen that happen more, more cases than not.
So these units are in the vehicle as well?
Yes, these are in car and body worn. We have two separate areas.
Is this going to mitigate the, the heat risk or the heat challenge now? I know one of the things, the reason the vehicles stay operating all the time or running is to keep the, whatever that unit is in the back cool.
It's part of it, yes. We won't have as much of that in there since it's a platform, but I can eliminate that because of our regular MDT system, the computer in the car.
Okay.
A lot of that. So it won't totally do away with it, but it will help.
So what are the risks of, number one, since this is being transferred, I guess, through the air, however you want to say it?
It's encrypted.
Okay, but, but could it still be hacked?
If, yeah, if Bulgarians want to try to get it, they might, but you'd have to be sophisticated. It is an encrypted system.
Anything can be hacked.
Well, I know, I, I know, but.
No, but it is encrypted.
We're relying on.
Yes.
Is there a backup system? Does it store like on this device?
Yes.
And so is redundancy?
You'll store your entire day's worth in the phone itself. It's similar to your, these phones now have a lot of storage capability. It doesn't go away until it knows it has a successful download.
But what happens if something to the phone? If the phone gets damaged?
Well, the phone gets damaged, believe me, we take out the, the computer part of it out of the phone, it would be, unless it got completely burned up in a fire, that's the only way you might have an issue with that.
I'm not a technology person, I just.
Yeah, we can, we can get the data out of the phone. A lot of people think they'll, they'll beat their phone with a hammer and we get the data out of it.
Okay.
So do we need a motion or anything for this or can they just go away?
No, we need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the police department buying the new body worn cameras.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Dollar amount? The two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty?
Yes, the two hundreds.
Uh, so this, this year, you want the whole amount or just this year's?
Yeah, the whole amount.
The whole amount, okay.
We got a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, body cams in the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Uh, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He's making his way back up.
Fifty ambulances.
Should've just grew back to that.
I know, I knew you'd think that when you saw it.
I've already talked to him about it.
All right, item, item number six, Garrett's back on the floor for ambulance purchase.
All right, it's me again, just a year later, same story. Um, so we're looking to make an ambulance purchase for delivery two years from now. Uh, as you remember, we have two ambulances already on order. They're expected in September, October of twenty-five. That'll cover fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six budgets. Um, so this one's looking for delivery in October-ish of twenty-six, which would be our fiscal year twenty-seven budget. So even if, even though we'll have three ambulances on order, they're spaced between three different budgets. A little different than this one is we're looking to go to a bigger box this time. Uh, we've historically had the twelve-foot boxes, we're looking to go to a fourteen-foot box, it's two, uh, feet longer. It gives more space inside, more cabinet space and more storage space as we're always expanding our medical capabilities. Um, hopefully by the time this comes in, we should hopefully be carrying blood by then and administering blood in the field. Um, we already do ultrasounds in the field and who knows what's gonna come in the next three years. So we definitely need that extra space in the back of the ambulance. Um, and it was only, I believe it was like ten or fifteen thousand dollars more to go to that extra two feet that make a big difference. And, uh, talking with Fraser, the company, a lot of people are going to the bigger ambulances these days. Goal of getting this approved tonight is next week, they go up approximately ten percent. So by approving tonight, you're saving about twenty thousand dollars, um, from next week. And I did talk to the ESD about it, uh, last ESD meeting and they didn't have any problem with it at all. And again, we always try for grants for it. Hopefully by then we'll, we apply to a grant, we normally get between seventy-five to a hundred thousand. And then I, just when I left the office a while ago, we had a, a check from another grant that we've never received before that I've been applying to the last few years for twenty-five thousand. So that's another revenue source for these ambulances. Um, and in this purchase, right now you're just buying the box. We'll place the, the actual vehicle purchase sometime next year or the year after, before, well, January of twenty-six. We'll place the vehicle purchase out of where we have the latest model when that time comes. And we anticipate that to be between sixty and seventy thousand dollars additional. Um, so today we're requesting the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six fifty to place the order from Fraser. Also asking you to approve the city manager to approve change orders up to ten percent above the quoted price in case any technology changes between now and then. Those two we have on order and we've already made some changes to that, but we were able to keep it below what y'all approved the first time. So this just gives that wiggle room to not have to bring it back to y'all if we need to make some upgrades between now and two years.
Fair Mr. Money, I'll make a motion that we authorize the purchase of an ambulance from Fraser LTD in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the city manager to approve change orders up to ten percent above the quoted price of two twenty-five, six fifty.
We got a motion on the floor to approve it?
I'll second.
And a second?
Need a year, we need a year, Ronnie, twenty, twenty?
Yes, I think so, since it's a, for the budget.
For fiscal year, fiscal year twenty, twenty-seven.
Yes.
We got a, a motion and a second to approve, uh, in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the city manager to approve change orders of up to ten percent above the quoted price. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you all again.
If you'll move, I think I have your name written down.
Moving on to item number seven, uh, discussion and consideration, uh, of Chamber of Commerce Christmas Mall Civic Center rental funding request.
Good evening, so, or, thank you for your patience, I know you've been here a long time. Uh, your chamber board president is in the audience as well as the chamber member and the executive director, Kelly, is in the audience. This item allows you to use hotel motel funds, which currently are undesignated for tourism purposes, to fund this civic center request. Uh, so you would be moving funds over. You can, you can do it in one of two ways, you can pay them and they can pay us back or you can authorize us to use it for, uh, the rental. Um, either way, you would be keeping your civic center whole, which we just talked about, the civic center having a long list of needs. And so that's what prompted, um, the, the thought that we could move those funds over. It does pass the test for tourism, so it would, it'd be a qualifier for these funds. Uh, we'll be happy to answer your questions, Kelly or myself will be happy to answer your question. Kelly, is there anything you wanted to say that I didn't cover?
No, you basically covered it. We have sixty-eight, uh, food, we're going to collaborate with the city and we're going to do the, have a table for the conference and planning. Commission to come out and, and take, uh, surveys from the people that join the Christmas mall.
And they will be collecting zip codes to validate that hot fund use.
Yeah, we do have vendors coming from Rockport, Austin, we have one guy coming from Florida, San Antonio, Yonkers. So they will be staying here.
Is there any, uh, means that's easier for you to account for, your accounting department?
For us to just handle it internally.
Was it, would it be, okay.
Yes, sir.
What is, what has changed since the last time the chamber's been here? I guess to, for staff to recommend us to provide this funding.
Well, this isn't a request as a payment to the Chamber of Commerce, this is a request to move fun- this is a request at staff's recommendation to move funds from hot funds to, uh, the civic center funds. So you wouldn't be paying the chamber directly like we had previously been doing. So that, that by its nature is different. It, and we know exactly what it's for, you know it's for the Civic Center Mall, she's qualified for what they're doing for it. We know it offers sales tax and hot tax for us, so in that way it's different. I'm not, not really sure if I answered your question.
No, I think so, I, I think that the challenge, and we spoke briefly about this.
Yeah.
We haven't seen, I, I don't know any of the updates that have happened, that transpired at the Chamber of Commerce. Since, um, whatever in April, May or whatever, I haven't been informed of any of the changes. I hear everything on the streets, but obviously there's a small, uh, portion of that is truth. You know, we, we, at the recommendation, we, we as council, uh, suspended the funding pending the things that were going on. But we haven't heard from anyone, so I don't.
What updates would you like to hear?
Sorry, Casey, do you mind?
City Council, Mayor?
Um, yeah, if I may, what updates would you like to hear, we're an open book?
Well, I'm, well, I mean, you sold the building.
We did.
I'm assuming, we packed, we sold it to you guys for ten thousand dollars, you sold it for much more than that.
That's how equity works, right? I mean, and that happened before my time, way before my time. So I can't speak on how it was sold, when it was sold, why it was sold, for the cost that it was sold. The only way for the chamber to have survived was to sell that building.
Okay.
That's it.
Let's back it up. So we, we have, we provided allocation or funding for the Chamber of Commerce for many years.
I think, I think we're getting off subject.
Might be a little outside of the scope of the item if we're talking about almost.
Right, yeah, we're, right now, we're just, we're just discussing and consideration of a, a funding request. So, uh, I think we're out, out of line here getting, getting it.
What I'm trying to understand is how did the request, the request came from the chamber? So that is a request, so it is for funding because this funding is going to be taken out of that balance that is used for hotel motel tax and given to our, to the Chamber of Commerce. And I guess my confusion or understanding is, is, um, why? We don't have any agreements in place, we, we don't have anything.
Well, we would, we would have a contract with them for the rental of the civic center, which would, would mandate that they have, they, they make the payment. And so we would be paying ourselves instead of paying the chamber, so.
Who paid for the rental last year?
The Chamber of Commerce did.
Chamber's always does.
Yeah, they have.
It's a revenue generator for the Chamber of Commerce as well as the Prairie Days, as well as the, the, um, the parade. Which it was stated publicly on social media that it was not gonna happen this year because council rescinded your funding.
It's that we were unsure if it would be able to happen.
Well.
And thankfully, we were able to work hard and, and make up the money that we lost. And in years past, we have paid for it, but we've also had an additional fifty-two thousand dollars a year allocated for events such as this.
I would like to just add something to that and, uh, yes, the, the chamber, we did cut, council cut, uh, funding for the chamber. Uh, there were some things going on that really can't talk about, I guess, whatever. But anyways, chamber's come a long ways. Uh, I would like to see council help them with this request for this Christmas mall. It's gonna bring in tourism, it's gonna help and, uh, I'd like to see us, you know, move forward and, and help, help with this, so.
Motion?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, consider, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Mall Civic Center rental funding request in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second on floor?
Your motion, your motion is to.
To.
Handle it internally rather than paying into the chamber.
As recommended, yeah.
Yes.
But, okay, so there's no, so we're covering everything?
We would be covering the positive.
We would be covering everything, that's correct, that is correct.
I, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate how much hard work they've put into this to try to save it.
Thank you.
Because I didn't, I didn't think there was any way to, I, I thought it was dead and gone. And I appreciate the work your volunteers do, I, I served on the board and I know how hard it is. And it's even harder now because of the circumstances.
We really appreciate that, we really do.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Moving on to number seven, uh, I'm sorry, item number eight, uh, discussion and consideration of approving, um, Keep El Campo Beautiful sign sponsorship program.
Hi, good evening, you guys, I'm here on behalf of the Keep El Campo Beautiful Board as our staff liaison. Um, we are looking to do a project where we are crowdsourcing funding to, uh, start purchasing and installing signage, um, including wayfinding signs and other types. So we put together a draft packet of what a sponsorship, um, page would look like. And it's got some examples of the types of signs, I'm not necessarily committing us to these designs. Uh, but just so that you can have some reference for what the type of sign would look like ultimately in reality. Uh, we have actually purchased in partnership with the, um, with the City Development Corporation and with our Chamber of Commerce, um, in designing some banners that are in this packet that have gone up in your downtown area. And, uh, did just recently place an order for Christmas banners. Uh, so that's something we are, we are actively working towards and we'd like to, uh, potentially start getting some other signs out here as part of our beautification efforts in the city. Um, and I have, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about these signs. Uh, I did not put any pricing or actual specs in there because we weren't sure if you guys would let us pursue this. And so if you do, then we would definitely have to do some footwork to figure out what those, uh, sponsorship levels would be. But they're organized in size from your big highway, uh, text dot sign all the way down to additional banners, uh, to fill in the gaps where we won't have enough banners, uh, from what we've ordered so far. But, uh, and your chairperson is here with us tonight as well as member John Fields. Uh, so if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them.
Do you really need?
Yes, sir.
Who put the Rice Bird sign out on the loop?
That is Gary Gillum.
Who?
Gary Gillum, uh, he did the El Campo, uh, next to the Pesca.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, he's very, um, he, he really likes to give back to the community.
Do you really need sponsors for these signs?
Um, unless we.
Make them as big and pretty as you can and permanent as you can and use, use our available funds.
Yeah, well, this would, uh, help.
It is promoting the town and tax income.
Yeah, yes, sir, absolutely.
It would be an eligible hot fund use, your hotel motel fund.
Okay, there you go.
It would not cover all of the ones we need, but.
That's right, we don't have enough to cover everything, but.
And we can't, uh, like with text dot, it's gonna be setting, uh, sections aside for us. And when they do the expansion through town with the rest of the roads, um, to, to have like an entry sign as you're driving in on the highway, but it's not necessarily guaranteed, but that would be like your big monument, um, permanent sign that everyone sees coming and going. But the rest of the stuff, I mean, we have nothing that points to, you know, where our civic center is and where our historic downtown is. And, you know, as we're going through this comprehensive plan and the, the Planning and Zoning Commission is really putting a focus on that historic component. Uh, they really wanna see design standards and so highlighting that area is a big deal for them. And so this would help you to, to do that and get the people who are coming to visit your town, uh, through your town and to the points that you want them to be at. Um, and so I have actually drafted a list of, uh, signs, um, inventory-wise and location-wise to kinda get an idea of how many we would need. And so once we start, i- if you guys will allow us to pursue this, then we'll start putting some of those numbers in place and reaching out to sign companies for some pricing, um, and get them to, to design this as we go with the different pieces.
Now, did you say the city, CDC can put money into these?
Yeah, um, she is actually helping me with the cost of the banners for both the, the ones that are currently downtown and that are actually in this packet with the little, uh, the ducks that match your underpass artwork at seventy-one and fifty-nine. Uh, as well as the Christmas ones, Christmas decorations are, are not looking really great and those are very, very expensive. So banners is kind of a more affordable alternative, so she's helping us with the purchase of those and the brackets to install.
Promotional signage, they could put money into.
She can, yes, uh-huh.
So what exactly are you looking for, uh, from us?
We just need.
Cause this isn't baked, there's still, there's quite a bit of work to, to be done. And there's costs that could be associated and et cetera that council would really need to be aware of before we gave the final blessing. So what are you looking for?
We just need permission to pursue the project into the next step. And if you guys want me to come back to you with estimated prices or whatever it is you want me to come back to you with, I'm happy to do that. We just need basically your permission to move forward with whatever that next expectation would be for doing this.
Make them big and beautiful and permanent.
Big and beautiful and permanent. Now, we do, we will have text dot requirements, so text dot will have a lot of say in, in what we end up doing. But it, it would be an alternative, this is kind of a more affordable approach to this than paying for a consultant to design, uh, specs for you that you may or may not end up using. And so we're just trying to, to do it in a more grassroots way for you.
No buzzards on the signs?
No buzzards, no buzzards.
Well, Crystal. Well, Crystal, we, we sure appreciate what y'all are doing with this comprehensive plan. Uh, we, uh, appreciate everything y'all are doing and keeping El Campo Beautiful is very, very important to everybody. So anyways, uh.
I don't know how, but I'll make a motion, but I don't know how to really start it, but I'll just say.
What, what would y'all like to see next?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize, um, is it Keep El Campo Beautiful to move forward with the sign sponsorship program to bring it back to. To bring back to council with pricing, locations, um, sponsorships that you may have in place. What the, 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 uh, cost is gonna be to the city, what's our liability or what we're gonna have to do to support that. Just the basic generic things that if you were gonna go out and develop this, who's gonna do all of this work? Because clearly you have a lot on your plate.
Would you maybe, would you maybe include like all pertinent information?
There, all pertinent information, but.
I wrote down what.
Thank you, Kelly.
So I make sure we get it to you, Mr. Work.
We got it, we got a motion and a second. And now you can. Uh, Blake.
Who's gonna oversee it? I know you've got a volunteer board and then you've got a, yourself and you're, you've got plenty on your plate.
This would actually fall under my, my, my duties for you. Even if it wasn't through your Keep El Campo Beautiful Board as your planner, this would be one of the roles that I play for you.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, move forward and, uh, Crystal will bring something back to, to us here and, uh, all in favor? Motion passes, move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into reports.
This is it, I'm trying to get you out of here before seven tonight. Uh, this is a report, I'm just letting you know that we have another settlement on opioids, uh, back in two thousand twenty-one. You approved a resolution authorizing the allocation of any and all opioid settlement funds. There's a new one with Proger and so, uh, the mayor will be signing this settlement, uh, paperwork so that the state of Texas and the city can, uh, receive the funds on this settlement.
What do we do with those funds, have we received any?
Have you received any, Garrett? Are you using it for Narcan or, yeah, he's purchasing?
I'll see if the PD needs Narcan and make those purchases, if not, it just goes towards REMS. That applies for.
Roughly, how much do you expect?
Hard to say.
We don't.